Year of doing the Shadow Town Council meetings. I think I speak for everyone. This is my favorite meeting of the year. We have a blast. The council members do an extensive report. So they give that to the council, to the Shadow Council members and staff. And we have fun with it. Be relaxed. Don't be nervous. If you want to ad lib a little bit with your fellow students, that's an option that you have. So, CMC, you ready? Ms. Donna? Mayor?
I call the November 2017 New Windsor Town Council meeting to order. Will everyone stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings are recorded electronically and will follow an agenda. Anyone who wished to have a matter placed on the agenda needed to submit the topic to the mayor in writing by the last Wednesday of the month, by the close of the business day, which is 3:00 PM. These items will be reviewed for approval. Anyone wishing to speak during the residents' concerns should sign their name on the signup sheet, which is on the table by the town manager. Business recognition. Belissimo's, Garber's Automotive, and New Windsor State Bank.
I guess nine years ago, we started recognizing our local businesses for the years. Several here in Windsor, and we have three tonight that we'd like to recognize. Unfortunately, it looks like two aren't going to be here. One might be running a little late. The mayor and council recognizes Belissimo's for their five years of service, November 1st, 2017. And the mayor and council recognizes Garber's Automotive Incorporated for their 35 years of service, November 1st, 2017. I talked to Clark Garber. Unfortunately, he tried for the past week to rearrange a family obligation. Was unable to do that, but wanted me to relay a message that he's very proud to carry on a business that his father, Larry, started 35 years ago. He's very proud to be part of New Windsor. If you're not familiar with Garber's Automotive, they do an outstanding job. When you take the vehicle there, you know they're getting an honest payment, an honest job, a job well done, looking to do it. So unfortunately, Clark's not particularly able to be here, but he can do anything that's right. And then the other, I'll ask Mr. Art Sock to come forward. Although New Windsor State Bank merged this past year, luckily, they worked in business here for 85 years. So the mayor and council recognize New Windsor State Bank for their 85, 85 years of service, November 1st, 2017. And we're still here. Same place, just a bigger bag. Thank you, sir. We all heard.
That's it? All right, we're still here. We are, like, the people of New Windsor. Actually, it's 85, but it really started a little before that as well. It started in 85. So it took a long time, during the depression, started over again, and it's what 85 has started. Started over again this year, so we'll be here for the majority.
Yes. Counsel, go to tab three. Before you are the minutes from the October 4th, 2017 Town Council meeting.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes.
I second that motion.
There is a motion by Councilmember Kaylin, seconded by Councilmember Abbott, to approve the minutes. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes and the minutes have been approved. Reports. Council committees. Counsel, go to tab four in your books. Public Works. Councilmember Hadley Abbott. Any comments or questions for Councilmember Abbott?
October has been another busy month for the Public Works Crew. At the beginning of the month, the Public Works Crew was busy setting up for the successful Music on Main event. This included cleaning the streets and marking the vendor spaces on Main Street. They also erected a fence at the Main Street lot. On the day of the event, they set up the road barricades to block the streets and put up the signs for parking in detour routes. October marks the end of the mowing season and yard waste pickup. Also, as part of the change of seasons, the Public Works Crew winterized the Lions Club Park to ensure it will be ready for usage next spring. Since the final mowing has been completed, the Public Works Crew has transitioned to leaf collection. The leaf machine has been serviced this year. It needed to have the battery replaced. Collection starts the first Monday in November and will be continued through the first week of December. Refer to the town newsletter for the leaf curbside pickup schedule. Please remember, leaves should not be raked into the gutter during inclement weather, rain, snow, or sleet, as this creates blockage of the system, of the drainage system. Last Saturday was the town's bulk trash day. In preparation, the Public Works Crew had to perform maintenance at the site to ensure the dumpsters could be properly placed for safety of the crew and citizens. As I'm sure you know, the dumpsters were available to, at the Public Works faculty located on Gear Lane. For the collection of the items that are typically too large to go in the regular trash, the Public Works Crew spent the morning on the site to help unload the items. Many town residents took advantage of this service. Three dumpsters were filled. Lastly, as we move towards winter weather, the Public Works Crew would like to remind everyone to obey the parking prohibit, oh my, probation on snow emergency routes. Vehicles parked on prohibited areas during snow emergencies create a hazardous situation for the crew and hinder their snow removal efforts. Please plan ahead and find a suitable place to park your vehicle before the snow falls this year.
Any comments or questions for Councilmember Abbott? Since you brought up winter weather, how are the town's salt reserves? And when will the Public Works Crew test the snow removal equipment?
We have plenty of salt and testing of the equipment will start in the next two weeks.
Water and Sewer. Councilmember Hunter Kaylin.
Our first item to share is a progress report on the town's portion of the Maryland State Highway Administration's Urban Reconstruction Project, previously known as Streetscape. As you may be aware, SHA is moving ahead with plans to replace roadway services, surfaces, sidewalks, curbs, and make other improvements on Main and High Streets in New Windsor. Before this can move ahead, the towns must repair or replace major sections of water and sewer piping under these roads. We have completed the repairs to the sewer pipes using an internal lining process, which caused minimal disruption and street closures, but the replacement of the water lines will necessitate digging up sections of these two main roads to remove the old pipes and install new ones. This means there will be lane closures and possibly short street closures, as well as service disruptions. We ask for your patience and understanding as we take the necessary steps to ensure that this portion of an aging infrastructure is maintained in order to provide adequate water service to New Windsor's residents. The second item to share is a repeat from last year's November council meeting and will come to you as a public service announcement about disposable or flushable wipes and the problem they continue to create in our sewer system. For several years, we have been dealing with clogs and blockages in the town sanitary sewer system pipes and pumps as a result of the disposable or flushing of so-called disposable towels or wipes. While many of these household products are labeled disposable and some even labeled flushable, they do not break down or disintegrate quickly enough to pass through the system without causing problems. Disposable does not mean flushable. Flushable is usually a mislabeled, is a usually mislabeling by manufacturers. Please do not flush any type of wipes, towels, or other cleaning products into the system. So the public service announcement wrote roads like this. No wipes down the pipes. Say it with me. No wipes down the pipes. Thank you for your cooperation.
Any comments or questions for Councilmember Kaylin? When can we expect to see the pipe replacement work begin on Main and High Streets?
If we follow the present schedule, the earliest we would see activity to replace the under-street piping would be November of next year, and it would, and it could last approximately 12 months.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaylin. Now into public safety, from Councilmember Harley Kaylin.
I am happy to report that we had a safe and happy Halloween. There were no reports of any incidents, and we have received several compliments about how great the people from this town were. We also received comments that residents were happy to see a continuous patrol by the sheriff's department through the neighborhoods. We are now entering into the holiday season, and with that, more postal deliveries are expected. With the popularity of businesses like Amazon and retail stores doing more mail orders, we have seen throughout the country an increase in thefts of these packages. These crimes are becoming more common, and we all can help curb this. Try to make arrangements to have the deliveries made when somebody is home, or have a neighbor take the delivery. Everybody can also keep a close eye out for individuals and cars coming into the neighborhoods. That may seem suspicious. If you, if you see something, please report it to the local authorities. Make sure all valuables are removed from vehicles and lock the doors. Leave lights on in your homes when you leave, and let your neighbors know if you are going to be gone for extended periods, and have family and friends keep an eye of your property. We would also like to remind residents that those who have and use fireplaces to have their chimneys checked and cleaned prior to using them. The fall is a great time for you to do this. Fire safety begins at home. We have received several complaints of drivers not properly, not properly stopping at stop signs and failing to stop for buses. I would like to remind everybody that stop signs are there for a reason, and you must come to a complete stop before safely proceeding. There are children in our community, and it's very important that drivers are aware that the law requires them to stop for all school buses when they have their red lights activated. There could be children running to the bus, and they may dart out in front of you at any time. Take an extra second or two, even after the buses leave, to look around and make sure you can proceed safely. Remember to drive like your own child lives here. We will have discussions with the town deputy about the problem areas. Councilman Smith has spoken to former town deputy Towson, and he advised that he will also assist with educating the new deputy about these areas and will work with him to continue to assist New Windsor. On October 31st, Councilman Smith attended the second meeting of the Maryland Municipal League's Small Town Emergency Management Committee in Annapolis. This year's committee agenda, committee agenda will largely focus on the opioid addiction crisis that the country and the state of Maryland are facing. This is a problem that has affected all areas of the state and in particular, our county. The other gender, the other agenda items will be the increase of civil disobedience and protests and upcoming flu pandemic. The committee will be working with the Maryland Association of Counties in developing best practices in dealing with these problems. There are other monthly meetings planned, and more information will be forthcoming.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaylin. Are there any comments or questions for Councilmember Kaylin? Yes?
I just have a comment of thanks. Coming home today, even on Jersey Avenue, and seeing that electric signs saying 25 miles an hour, warm my heart.
I live right down from that sign. You could see traffic slowing down. Thank you.
How will this committee affect small towns like New Windsor?
And the governor have each declared this a health crisis, and that that will allow for state and federal money and agencies to be allocated to help fight this growing problem. The committee will also develop a system of communication protocols that will allow for the sharing of information and assistance from state, county, local, and neighboring jurisdictions. The best practices that seem to be working in other jurisdictions will be implemented throughout the state and will be available to assist municipalities that may be facing these situations and may not have the resources to implement these types of efforts. We are also going to develop a list of items that citizens will need in the event of natural or man-made disasters. These will educate people about things they will need in the event of disasters they may not have thought of. These will be in the form of a brochure that can be distributed to local communities.
Thank you. Economic Development. Councilmember Natalie Riley.
The Carroll County Downtown's Economic Development Group met on October 26th. They are working on several events to draw people to Carroll County's small businesses. The next event is a shopping passport event for Small Business Saturday. The shopping passports will be delivered to hundreds of small retailers and restaurants throughout Carroll County. Shoppers will be given a passport when they shop at a participating merchant. Every time people visit a participating merchant, they will be given a sticker, and when they have eight stickers, they can drop off the passport at designated collection sites. A drawing of the completed passports will take place on December 5th, and several $100 gift cards will go to the winners. Councilwoman Schultz will distribute the shopping passports and stickers and Small Business Saturday materials to New Windsor area businesses. Mayor Rube will take about Preservation Maryland's Six to Fix Program in his report. A Six to Fix event was held on October 19th. Councilwoman Schultz and Manager Schaefer developed materials for a presentation at the event, including a poster and leaflet. Councilwoman Schultz and Mayor Rube want to remind everyone that the town Facebook group is an official town group, so please limit posts to information relevant to the town and local area. And please be respectful in your comments and posts. The posting guidelines are pinned to the top of the page. Comments and posts that violate the guidelines will be deleted, and individuals who post inappropriate comments slash posts may be removed from the group.
Any comments or questions for Councilmember Riley? When is Small Business Saturday?
Small Business Saturday is held on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. This year is on November 25th.
Thank you. Community Enhancement. Councilmember Brian Dougherty.
One of the way in which I have tried to make New Windsor a better place to live is through a Facebook campaign called New Windsor Saves the Planet. Did you know that our town pays 10, tens of millions of dollars annually, tens of thousands dollars annually for our garbage to haul and dumped in the landfill, but pays only, pays off only for hauling and nothing to dump our recycling? And that this landfill, otherwise known as the dump, is a stinky mountain of garbage that has nowhere else to go. It should be our family's goal to keep, to have bigger and for recycling bins than garbage cans. So what can we take out of our trash and put into our recycling bins? Our cardboard boxes at the curb? Cardboard, cereal, and other paper, paperboard boxes, paper bags, newspapers, gift wrap, inserts, office paper, junk mail, magazines and catalogs, paperback books, aluminum, tin and steel cans, containers and foil, glass jars and bottles, plastic, plastic tubs, white mouth containers, pay for money, just kidding, but glad you are listening. And what is not recyclable? Please, no plastic grocery bags, no batteries, no styrofoam, no electronics, no food waste, no ceramics or dishes, no trash or yard waste, motor oil containers, number six clamshell containers, no household hazard waste, no light bulbs, windows, glass, or mirrors. What else can we do in New Windsor in addition to recycling to improve the environment now and for the future? We can turn things off if we're not using them. Turning our TV and computers off at the end of the day can, can a difficult and time-consuming process. Cough, cough. But leaving them on standby overnight is not only a pointless addition to our car, carbon footprint. It also adds to the electricity bill. Get a bike. Bike you, bike, bikes use no fuel, produce no emissions, keep you fit and help you live longer. Also, bikes are cool. Reuse plastic bags or use reusable bags. Stop killing so many dolphins. There are more than five trillion pieces of plastic in the world, in the world's oceans, of which plastic bags account for a large proportion, and they strangle sea animals and seriously damage the food chain. Don't leave chargers plugged in. Phones, phone and laptop chargers constantly left in the socket will continue to use a small amount of electricity, completely unnecessary. Take a second to pull them out. Think of bees. Bees are very important to our food ecosystem, and it's a huge case of concern that their numbers are declining. You can help out by making your garden be friendly with plants such as lavender, roses, sunflowers, and geraniums. And now an announcement. Please join New Windsor Heritage as they honor New Windsor veterans throughout history in a gala event on November 11th, 2017, at the Firehouse Social Hall at 6:00 PM. This event is open to everyone, and tickets are still available. There will be dinner, stories, color guard, induction of veterans into the 2017 Hall of Fame, and Councilman Smith will be DJing vintage music. Tickets are $25 for veterans and $30 for everyone else.
Any comments or questions for Councilmember Dougherty?
What can young people do to make New Windsor a better place to live?
Recycling, comp, compost, composting, and conserv, conservation.
Mayor's Report. Go to tab five.
I want to begin my report by talking about Music on the Main. This in-the-street event takes place on the first Saturday in October. Just two years old, I'm very pleased with the turnout of visitors and the strong community support to make this event a tremendous success. There were four outstanding bands, great food, lots of vendors and activities for all ages. The next Music on the Main meeting will be held on Thursday, November 16th at 7:00. I will post on the town's Facebook page the location of the meeting. Before the Music on the Main began, as president of the New Windsor Lions Club, I had the honor of dedicating a bench in order, in honor of former Mayor James Carlisle. It's a beautiful bench that's on the front lawn of the St. Paul United Methodist Church, along with the Little Free Library that was recently installed. The Little Free Library is full of books for all ages to read and enjoy. If you need more information about the Little Library, please feel free to talk to me after the meeting, as I'm the steward of the Little Free Library. On Wednesday, October 25th, I represented the town by riding in the Francis Scott Key Homecoming Parade in Tawny Town. I believe the Homecoming Parade will be held in New Windsor next year. Along with the town manager Schaefer and circuit rider Mike Reynolds, we continue working with state highway administration officials to keep our Streetscape project on schedule. We will hear more about that later in the meeting. In conjunction with the Streetscape project, I will be talking to a representative from the Community Legacy Grant Program tomorrow morning. The Community Legacy Grant, if awarded, will help pay for pedestrian lighting along Main and High Streets. Several projects have been completed or started in the past few months. Two years ago, I completed a special projects grant application with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for $450,000 for the abatement of lead paint at the historic Deelman Inn. Not only were we awarded the grant, but the project is completed, along with the lead paint abatement. We also had the roof painted, chimneys replaced and repaired, rain spout and down spout installed, and many other repairs made. I encourage everyone to go and see how great the inn looks. As I mentioned in a previous meeting, Deelman Inn was selected as one of the Six to Fix Projects by Preservation Maryland. There was an event for the official announcement on October 19th in Baltimore. I wanted to thank Councilman Hoffman and Town Manager Schaefer for attending in my absence as I was out of the country on a mission trip. I have a meeting with Jessica Felt from Preservation Maryland next Wednesday afternoon to talk about our next steps. Six to Fix is a program to promote awareness of historic buildings in need of restoration. Another mayor project going on is the remediation of the two sewer lagoons. Once completed, I envision this area to be the home of a very nice recreational park. We will hear more about this project in Town Manager O'Connor's report. In closing of my mayor's report, I want to extend my greatest appreciation to our town council and staff. As you either have witnessed personally of the projects going on in town or by my report, we have a lot going on. The projects would not be going as well as they are without their oversight and support. I thank you all for what you do. Any questions from me about the mayor's report?
Community Deputy, Deputy, Master Deputy Brian Colosi.
First, I want to personally introduce Master Deputy Brian Colosi. He started October 19th. He is the community liaison for Union Bridge, New Windsor, and you've got big shoes to fill of March, but I think you're, you're well on the, on, on your way to doing an outstanding job a little bit. I've had the opportunity to talk to you and actually work with you in the, in the past two weeks. So if you'd like to go over to the microphone there and speak?
Yeah, Brian, Brian was a good pick for the town. Brian is who I wanted in the beginning, but unfortunately, I couldn't just, you know, get him here like a magic wand. It took a little month, couple months with the sheriff, working behind the scenes and whatnot. So he's really the best fit for this job. I have a whole agency. I wouldn't recommend anybody else. I know I've said that a few times already, and he's I know I've said that a few with council already and, um, he's very community oriented. He has a lot of fresh ideas. Um, helping, you know, it's gonna, he's got different perspectives to look at things. He's gonna link the towns up more, so you all can really prosper even more. So I look forward to, um, Brian and all of his talents and, um, it's, it's gonna work out really well, a really good deal with himself.
So do I, thank you.
So I got quite a bit to review. Um, I don't know what, um, Master Deputy Simmons left off with, but, um, I got the October report and the September report. Cause I'm not sure if he, so he had what happened in December. But it looks like we handled forty-three calls for service in September. Um, anything from A O As to selected reinforcements, um, animal complaints. Uh, we had unauthorized use, um, three suspicious, one weapons complaint, um, three accidents with, um, damage, property damage, um, one assault, three follow-ups, six vehicle stops, one labor, uh, violation, two patrol checks, um, one check welfare, one theft, one neighbor would complain, two civil issues, one intoxicated person, um, one system fire, um, destruction of property, some in service, um, looks like two, um, B N E's or burglaries, um, a residential alarm and a suicide attempt. Um, annoying complaints, the accident complaint of accidents of person injury and destruction of property, or acts or disorderly. So, uh, just to sum that up, in September, October, um, we've actually went up to forty-eight, um, but mostly vehicle stops, a lot of complaints were in vehicle and speeding and that kind of stuff. So, um, we kind of stepped up a little bit in that month. But, um, so far in October, uh, we had four patrol checks, one accident, traffic damage, um, four selected reinforcements, which would be selecting the areas that needed the enforcement the most. So like stop sign violations or, um, traffic, uh, speed violations on Lambert and Turk Street is brought up. So those were, uh, addressed. Um, in total, we had nineteen vehicle stops, two suspicious, one, um, assist other agency, one follow-up, two animal complaints, um, three special assignments, two B N E's which, um, two of them were actually the Dealman Inn. So as the mayor said, if you wanted to visit, um, go in. Stay outside and see and look around outside, not inside. So, um, one assist fire department, two assaults, uh, two general traffic complaints, two warrant attempts, one arrests, or sorry, residential alarm, one C D S, which we'll touch basically with that in a minute, and, uh, check welfare, which would be equal forty-eight, um, oh, and sorry, one domestic. So forty-eight calls for service. And October fifteenth of the vehicle stops were actually from me in two weeks, so. Um, one of the vehicle stops actually led to a C D S arrest, which we ended up seizing, three pounds of marijuana, um, um, from a gentleman out from Hampstead, um, with that, investigation's ongoing with that. Um, a couple of other things, um, I'm gonna be conducting some surveillance efforts, um, to try to catch some of the vocal vandals that, uh, are damaging property and that kind of stuff. So that's an ongoing effort as well. Um, the other thing, um, my schedule, I'm making my own schedule. Um, so as long as I get forty hours per week, twenty hours in each community, um, the, the sheriff's office is happy with that. So I will be popping around when nobody knows. So, um, so hopefully that'll keep everybody on their best behavior. Um, in the very soon, um, yeah, very soon, uh, the sheriff's office, I actually went to Lehigh and to our D O T certified deputies, we're going to actually do a, um, truck enforcement, which will be a mandatory vehicle inspection for all trucks, um, in Lehigh and also any semi trucks in the area. So we're gonna be doing that in the very near future. Um, so don't be surprised when you see a whole bunch of trucks parked alongside the road or something, um, with multiple police cars because we're doing truck enforcement. Um, other than that, it's only been two weeks. It's been very effective two weeks for me. Um, and it's gonna be a little bit before I get into the groove of things cause I gotta get a lot of things caught up, um, that from my patrol area previous. So I'll be bouncing around quite a bit, um, and also the investigations that are going on, um, with the C D S and also our charts that we received. And also, um, we had another incident recently that we ended up doing a second search warrant in town within the last two weeks. So, um, which was a assault, assault call, um, which was messy related to they knew each other. But with that, we end up doing the other search warrant on the house. So, so far in the past two weeks, we've hit New Windsor, um, two search warrants has been created and, um, one house in New Windsor, one house in Hampstead has been hit due to a search warrant stemming from this community. So I didn't see it, I mean, very good within the past two weeks. So, um, other than that, that's all I have. Any questions? Go ahead.
I'm very excited that you're here. Um, I've been looking through the, um, town council minutes for the past year where one of the families actually called and are very excited about, um, some more police presence. One concern I have is that we went from forty hours to now twenty hours. I am happy for anything, cause we felt in two months, we didn't have any presence. Um, so one question I have, I think has to do with waiting for a solid search warrant that you're talking about because last Thursday there was an incident and, um, police were canvassing our street. There were police outside my house all night. I got two police. Um, it's very concerning that this has been on going along for us as families. And I wonder how we can be communicated where hell is safe. When we look out our window and I have babies and there's police in the street, how do I know?
You can always tell the sheriff's office.
They didn't give us any information.
When, when this happens, we, we, we're trying to best to solve the issue as fast as we can. However, we can't give enough information to, because the investigation is wide enough and stuff. With that, it was a nice result. We got eleven foot and determined something that the sheriff left later.
So we called Friday just wondering had it been figured out and they wouldn't even tell us that. Meanwhile, there was a similar situation right next door to us in, in previous months where they were telling us they're apprehended. We, we know now way too much about personal violence, but that we're on the edge of the Maryland line, really build suspects in the neighborhood there. I'm just saying.
Absolutely. And in this environment, public information, so if you know the suspects, your neighbors' information, if you see something, they'll tell you anytime when you're incarcerated and they get the least, you can get notifications that way. Um, around the village as well, um, so that you are aware of what's going on, um, which are being brought up and that kind of stuff. Um, with that, that's ongoing investigation as well. So I think really a few parts, that's with that. But, um, because of the police warrant, it was because it was eleven foot and we're trying to locate him. However, why we were here to turn itself into the office, so.
Yeah, it's just like having these in the backyard and police are all around.
And, and the reason why is they're placed outside the residence, because we have to clear the residence to the search. So, um, with that, I know the landlord, um, and with that, I will be thankful for my work here very certainly. And I'm trying to kind of determine some of these issues as well.
Also, I'm gonna be straight now, and Brian, back this up, the sheriff's office uses the reverse nine-one-one system. So if there's a threat to the community, um, you know, direct threat, children can make the one call and just immediately get it out. And we've used it before and it's a really good way of letting everybody know. And I've used it on down here, which is quite fantastic.
How, so that knows, like, I haven't heard Jamie's not going number, you don't have, how does that work? How does it?
That's a good question.
I, I do, it's only nine months, I think it's only nine months.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought I was.
It's been a week since seven years that I've been, I've only used it once. It's been at this for a, a downtown, a toddler that was running the streets and it was your first time you wanted to.
Well, yeah, one suggestion, Brian, would be talk to Councilor Schultz when this council's not. Um, and then you can get some down on Facebook quickly and obviously.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll get you my contact information, Brian, cause I can, and you can text me and I can post things on Facebook. And I also just wanna, not to discuss this now, but we do have a, a disorderly house, um, ordinance that the council passed a couple of years ago, and I already mentioned this to, um, Ms. Thomason, that when you have a house in your neighborhood where there continues to be problems, you should report that to the town and you can ask Count, um, Manager Schaefer later for some details about that. But that's another tool and that, you know, also goes to the landlord. And they don't like getting those kinds of calls. So that can be very effective and it's been very effective with other houses.
Thank you. One more, sorry, I'm gonna, but just about this before I mentioned, um, that there's a radar and those are protecting area factors. We have one on Church Street and I could tell while the sign was up that people were really slowing down. Um, the report showed that, um, really people were speeding at low points, like twenty-four eight miles. And there's, um, just a little setting at six o'clock, um, and lots of wood.
No, I remember, uh, church, sorry.
No, no, the member, yeah, there's.
I, I stopped to be at one member the other day for going forty, twenty-five. I think that's two and twelve stops.
Um, so I didn't know what those reports were about, what is the follow-up to the sign? Um, like what's that sign? Do you get a copy and then you can see that it's like a?
Sure, I'm, I'm new to the area, so I, I know that, um, it makes the information for the, for the, for the. We know the best time to sit is to definitely hurt the issues. Um, so we aren't wasting our time. I'm not saying that, um, we can hit other areas that need it as well, so we can actually focus.
Very good. Yeah, I, I, I can't be everywhere all the time, so.
Let me, let me just, let me just jump in.
Yep.
I just today was able to download the Lambert Avenue data.
Okay.
And when Mark was here, I would show him the data we would. And so I expected the same from you. I'll show you that data. It shows when the people are speeding, how many cars are speeding. So that sign tells what hours, you're most likely to see people speeding. So that information, I'll, I'll pass on, but I just downloaded that data today.
Great. Thank you very much. I just was wondering how, what that process was, like, the signs are rarely effective on there. And, um, I didn't know.
Yep, it, that, it definitely fits us, but we just. Yep, and like I said, I'm kind of the road, um, running. The past few, or three, so it's, uh, probably a government, our next year. You're welcome. Any other questions?
As I mentioned to you before, uh, if there's equipment that you need, uh, please bring it to the council's attention, uh, Frank's attention, my attention, whoever. Uh, and we will be very supportive of purchasing equipment for you.
Absolutely. So I, um, actually talked to Wayne today, um, when we were showing two cameras. And he said it might be, um, good to get you more cameras so we can actually float it around. Sorry, um, float it around the community for the better, so especially if the parks and that.
Right.
It's getting the, frankly, so. Other than that, I just look forward to working in both communities, um, and, um, we'll see what we can do.
I just have you on board.
Thank you.
West Carroll Rec Council, Kevin Kornick.
Uh, please, so you can be recorded. And as you can see, this is not Kevin.
Yeah, yeah, Mrs. Kornick.
I'm not Kevin. I have the better half of Kevin.
Smarter.
Thanks, I appreciate that, uh, Councilwoman. Um, I'm Darnell Kornick and I'm, um, gonna be filling in for Kevin because he is at a West Carroll function, uh, this evening as a matter of fact. Um, so just a little bit of information about, uh, the West Carroll program. Uh, our fall programs are wrapping up. Um, cheerleading and basketball, um, are underway. The basketball, um, evaluations and triads are starting and that's where he is actually right now, over in Tawny Town. Our basketball program has officially united with Tawny Town. Um, that was in the works, so it is definitely official. So now we are known as the F S K Junior Eagles. So if you see, if you go to any of the games, you'll see that our jerseys will be representing that. Um, as far as the basketball season goes, we are estimating having about four hundred kids, uh, for the basketball program, which encompasses, um, West Carroll, this area as well as Tawny Town, which is about forty teams and about seventy-five coaches. Um, so we're anticipating a really great season. Um, we did, uh, get the okay to be able to use the, we talked about this, I think maybe two meetings ago, to still use, uh, New Windsor Middle School. And, um, we actually will be having the keys, so we're able to, um, have access to that, to be able to use that. We've got the use facilities to be able to have that for the week, um, in the evenings for practices as well as Saturday and Sunday times for games. So that's, um, excellent. Um, the West Carroll Rec Council is looking for someone to fill the accounting position there. Um, Sandy Sullivan has been in that position, in that role for years. And, um, so this is her final, uh, run. So if anybody is interested and perhaps, um, wanting to have a little accounting or you have a little extra, a little bit of free time on your hands, um, feel free to, um, come to our meetings. Um, so I have, um, hope that my technology is working properly. Um, an email was sent out and Kevin wanted me to just read this. Uh, the Carroll County Department of Racks and Parks is seeking donations to help support construction of the first public use artificial turf field in Carroll County, Maryland. These donations, along with the sale of advertising and naming rights, will supplement existing support of five hundred thousand from the county commissioners for this new facility. The turf field will be a part of a larger athletic complex located at the former North Carroll High School site in Hampstead and located in the stadium. This field will be scheduled as a countywide facility with usage by all rec councils, high school sports, regional tournaments and special events. Uh, Recreation and Parks continues to receive a growing number of requests for these facilities and many rec council programs have traveled out of county to play on these fields. With over forty-five thousand people registered annually in our rec council programs, a donation of as little as ten dollars per registered can help make this field a reality. So if anyone's interested, um, you can get on the Parks and Racks rep website and, um, donations can be made to the Park Legacy Fund, um, to support that. So that's pretty exciting as well. Um, then on another note, uh, this evening, the, uh, girls hockey team, uh, from F S K won their regionals, uh, and they'll be going to the semifinals. And they wanted to point out that some of those players that are on that team actually started out with the West Carroll Rec, um, program for field hockey. So it's nice to see that, um, their roots were grounded here and that they're progressing and, um, having, um, you know, a successful, uh, season. Any questions up the rec council? All right, thank you.
Fire Chief, Chief Tom Coe.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, first I'd like to, uh, thank Councilmember Kaylin for her accurate and timely fire safety message in her report. That was fantastic. Uh, the New Windsor Fire Department's been busy for the last month. We've had twenty-seven calls for fire rescue services this month, bringing us to a year-to-date total of two hundred and fifty. And fifty-five calls for emergency medical services in the month of October, bringing us to a year-to-date total of four hundred and eighty-four. Uh, some of the more significant notable responses, uh, were a multiple structures on fire on Route four oh seven this past weekend. It was two barns and actually the farmhouse on the property, as well as, uh, two days later, a house fire over in Pleasant Valley. So it's getting to be that time of year where folks are using, uh, heaters and alternate heating methods. So we just wanna be careful, uh, while we're out there. Uh, as we set our clocks back this weekend, please don't forget to test your smoke alarms. And, uh, if you don't have the ten-year lithium batteries for your smoke alarms, make sure you change your batteries as well. Fire Department is hosting our, uh, Fall Sportsman's Raffle this weekend and I believe that event is sold out. And we continue to have our Tuesday evening bingos. If you'd like to stop by the firehouse and play bingo on Tuesday night. nights. That's all I have, unless there's any questions for me.
We have a question.
Outstanding.
Will the Santa detail schedule be on your website?
Absolute. We hope to have the schedule. We're working with Mrs. Falls right now to find out when Santa's availability in December is. But he'll be out in the New Windsor and greater communities of the first half of December. We'll have that information on our website.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Attorney Ashton Graham.
There is a state law that allows various government entities to sue people who file false claims against these entities. That same law requires these entities to file reports with the same state, or with the state, tailing these suits. In the 2017 session, the General Assembly amended this law to add municipalities to the list of government entities. As a result, I now have to file a report as town attorney. The town of New Windsor has not filed any such suit. We haven't had any claims filed against us. True or false? Therefore, my report to the state will state that we have nothing to report. I will send the town clerk a copy for her records.
Any questions or comments for Attorney Graham? How often will the town have to file this report?
Every year by October first.
Town Manager, Ms. Mackenzie O'Connor, Tab Six.
Storm Water Management retrofit. The project has been awarded to Thomas Bennett and Hunter. Work is expected to begin in mid-November. No day has been scheduled for when the filling of the lagoon may begin. Blue Ridge and College Avenue Design and Engineering RFP. The six percent submittal has been made to the town. Upon the complete, upon completion of the town review, the project will be submitted to Maryland State Highway Administration and the Carroll County for review. The latest engineer's estimate of probable cost still has the project with the budget limit. This will be talked about later in the old business talk. Sludge press. The engineers have selected a sludge pump. The project engineering should move to the final design quickly. How to, how to best fund the construction will be the topic discussion for the November work session. Altie Ridge POS project. Project is tentatively scheduled for December twentieth for Board of Public Works approval. Maple Avenue sidewalks. The sidewalks repair was completed by Precision Concrete. Photos of the work that was completed are attached. Pictures are in the back of Tab Six. Sewer lining. The lining work is complete. Birds, wait, bids are being requested for the replacement of six to eight manholes, rings, and covers. This work will be combined with the repair of about twenty-five manholes around town that project above the road surface. These manholes have been damaged by snowplows and also caused damage to the snowplows. Water line design. Oh, sewer lining will also be talked about in the old business. Water line design. About thirty percent drawings have been submitted to SHA for review. This is about a four-week period. Lighting. SHA is completing the promility lighting plan based on the fixture the town selected. Once the lighting layout is complete, a new cost estimate will be developed. SHA indicated they will only participate in the basic fixture costs and not the additional features such as the cage, outline, and banner arms.
Any questions or comments for Ms. O'Connor? How much dirt will be hauled for the Blue Ridge Pond to the lagoon? Will there be a notification to the residents?
There will be about one thousand seven hundred cubic yards of dirt hauled to the lagoon. When the dates for the hauling have been scheduled, they will be posted on the town website and Facebook page. The residents that are adjutant to the project and are most affected will receive letters as well.
Thank you. Treasurer's Report, Clerk slash Treasurer, Mr. TJ Frazier, Tab Seven.
The show following now is given and popular for 2017. General fund balances two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars, fifty-five cents. The general fund capital budget, the balance is ninety-one thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars, thirty cents. The enterprise fund balance is two-hundred-seventy-three thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars, fifty-four cents. The enterprise capital reserve, and three hours, funds, three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, twenty cents. The money market fund, the balance is forty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, twenty-nine cents. The real property report is there are the ballpark properties for sale. There are eleven properties and a four-floor process. The water sewer personally charged fees assessed on November sixth, two thousand seventeen. FY seventeen audit has been finalized and all necessary paperwork has been submitted to the state of Maryland.
When and how often does the town need to have an audit?
The town even requires a lot to have an annual audit performed. The fiscal year and June thirty of the year, the state of Maryland required a liberal search on each year.
Was that done? Were you finished? Okay.
Mr. Andy Rigler from Lehigh sent me an email today. He's in Alabama this week. Quick update. The long belt from New Windsor Union Bridge is operational. Dry commissioning testing is complete. After the Thanksgiving break, we will begin hot commissioning and testing up to the maximum tonnage. We still continue to run the crusher occasionally to test the equipment and make roadstone for the use in the New Windsor Quarry. Development of the quarry continues with Allen Myers and will continue through the first of the year. Blasting occurs about every other day to remove the overburden and get down to limestone. CJ Miller will begin, will be, you know, CJ Miller will begin this week on Phase Four, which is the completion of the safety berm around the property. CJ will have a crew working Monday through Friday, forty hours a week, along Thirty-One and Old New Windsor Road, tying the new berm into the existing berms. When completed, the only two entrances to the New Windsor Quarry will be the paved entrances off Thirty-One and the new entrance off, entrance off New, Old New Windsor Road. CJ has until June 2018 to complete the entire berm. Tree planting will finish on the existing berm and resume next fall on the berm CJ Miller will install. The plant is very excited with the progress of the quarry, crusher, and overland conveyor. Testing so far has exceeded expectations. Hundreds of trees and cover have been planted along the conveyor to help blend with the natural surroundings. Andy Rigler, Safety Manager, Lehigh Hanson.
Are there any comments or concerns for the town manager?
From the citizens.
Oh, from the citizens.
Keep moving then.
Okay. Old Business. College and Blue Ridge Avenues Road Improvements. New Windsor Urban Reconstruction. Okay.
Town manager.
I'm just going to jump in here. Just really not a good idea for the council if they have any information or they're starting to have. Just, we did need to mention that the grant, we filed the, what's called the environmental review that's been filed with Department of Housing and Community Development, and the request for the regional funds have been filed. So procedurally, we're moving forward with the grant. We have the plans in our office. Someone wants to come see them or look at them. And at the work session on the sixteenth, we're going to do a review here with the council to go over the particulars of the plan. So if someone wants to come, we'll have the plans projected, and they'll be able to take, take a look at them. But I don't know if any, any members of the public or anyone on the council had some questions about that project that they want to hear about in particular.
Okay, New Windsor Urban Reconstruction or the Streetscape Project.
This is similar, just a similar thing. I didn't know, again, as we go through each month, there's some questions that usually come up from council members as they interact with the community, if there's something that came up from them. The Tiger Grant, as we discussed, has been submitted, but that probably won't be heard from them for six months. Tiger Grant is transportation investment generating economic revenue. And the state has submitted an application of that to help fund the Streetscape Project. Now, it doesn't really drift down to the town's portion of the project, but it makes it more likely that the project will be funded. So that's what we're looking on the shore. But Tiger Grant is, if you hear Tiger Grant, that's what it is. It's a way to pay for projects that create economic revenue. So that's, that'll be six months, at least till they hear from that. In the meanwhile, the purpose of the assessment's still being completed, which I don't have any update on that.
And I'm pretty sure Springdale Preparatory School sent a support letter for the Tiger Grant, as well as Lehigh Hanson.
Again, we'll be doing a, at the work session, we're going to be doing a review of the lighting plan. We'll have that in hand. We're doing a review of the lighting plans. If you want to come see the lighting plan, come by that night. We're going to do a review of that.
And that, the work session will be on the thirteenth, right?
Sixteenth.
Thirteenth.
Sixteenth is a Thursday.
Well, yeah, that'll.
It's either the thirteenth or the twelfth.
Third Monday. It's the third Monday of this month.
Twentieth.
Whatever, whatever the third Monday, that was last month that was the sixteenth.
It was so much fun, you want to do it again.
Okay, whatever the third Monday is.
All right.
My apologies.
Not a problem.
Does the council have any other old business? Before we start the new business bullet, I want to ask Councilmember Natalie Riley about any teenager job opportunities available in the community?
I could say you could just, like, help around, like, just, I don't, I don't know.
That wasn't fair.
Sorry.
He's telling her to say.
What she's trying to say is that there's a lot of opportunities. Might not be a lot of employment opportunities, but there's a lot of opportunities to get your service community hours in New Windsor, working with the Lions Club, the Fire Department, the church, the New Windsor Heritage Committee. They would be more than happy to have you help out. That's what you meant?
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, that. There's a, there's a lot of opportunities, like, at your school, too. Like, your school will give you a lot of opportunities to do different jobs.
Very good.
New Business. Purchase of a Yakima Drive for Rao Road Booster Station.
Background. The, the Rao Street Booster Station has three pumps which boost water to the large pestis tank, pestical tank. Each pump has electronic control called a drive. One of the original drives, which is mid-1990s vintage, has failed. The station currently has only two operation pumps, operational pumps. Three pumps are necessary to meet, to meet peak demand and maintain.
Redundancy.
Redundancy. One of the original drives has been replaced previously. One of the third drives is original. Control System Twenty-One has submitted a proposal of three thousand, no, three million.
Three thousand.
Three thousand forty-two dollars to supply and install Yishipa P one hundred, one thousand for a pack, for a price of three thousand forty-two dollars. Desired auction approval of the, approval of the proposal by Control System Twenty-One to supply and install the Yikishiwara P one thousand pump drive for three thousand four hundred, forty-two dollars. No, three thousand forty-two dollars.
I'll make the motion to purchase.
Any questions about the Yakima Drive? Is there a motion to purchase the Yakima Drive?
I make the motion.
There is a motion by Councilmember Kalen, seconded by Councilmember Riley, to purchase a Yakima Drive for the Rao Road Booster Station. Are there any questions or comments about the motion? Treasurer Frazier, do we have the funds to cover this purchase? All those in favor of approving the motion say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Town Manager O'Connor, please move forward with the purchase process. Does the council have any other new business?
There are a few announcements. Does the council have any announcements for the public? The New Windsor Lions Club Community Blood Drive is next Thursday, November ninth, at Windsor Station from two to seven-thirty. You can go to redcross.org to sign up or let me know, and I will schedule a life-saving appointment. One at a time after the meeting, though, don't rush me. Maryland Square, this is the second year where we're, where I'm having Maryland Square, where I will be at Two-O-One Main Street. It's on the corner across from the church, on Friday, November seventeenth, beginning at nine, nine a.m. Food, for food donations for the New Windsor Food Pantry at St. Pauli Knight Methodist Church. Or one dollar will equal one pound of food. Last year, Maryland Square raised about a ton and a half of food. This year's goal is two tons. New Windsor Heritage Hall of Fame honoring the veterans, Saturday, November eleventh, at six p.m. Christmas tree lighting will be before the next town council meeting on Wednesday, December sixth, at six p.m. at Main Street Park. At this time, we're going to go. At this time, we're going to go down and we're going to start with Councilman Dougherty. Just talk a little bit about yourself, your family, your school, what grade you're in, and why you decided to sign up for this great event.
Well, I'm in seventh grade. I go to Springdale. That's my mom.
What are your interests that got you into being here tonight?
I like to have attention.
That was an honest politician.
Anything else, Brian, you want to?
I'm okay.
You're okay?
Councilmember Abbott.
I'm in eighth grade. I go to Northwest. My mom's over there. And I came because I wanted to be active in my community.
Councilmember Kaylin?
I am in eighth grade. I go to Northwest. And I did this because it's a good experience and my mom's on town council and I wanted to see what it was like.
Very good. Mayor?
I'm Olivia Mason. I'm in eighth grade. I go to school at Northwest, Middle, and Tawny Town. And I'm really involved in after-school clubs, doing a musical and dance after school, in which I actually miss to be here because I think it's fun to care about something. Just like having something that you like and you're fighting for it because it's right.
Attorney Graham?
Oh, I'm Ashton Graham. I'm in sixth grade and I go to Springdale Preparatory School. I came here just to experience something new.
Councilmember Riley?
My name is Natalie Riley. I'm in eighth grade and I go to Northwest. And I knew that coming to this would be a good opportunity for me and it can not only help me in the long run, but I mean, give me a different perspective now of how everything is from being a younger person in my community.
Councilmember Kaylin?
I'm in eighth grade and I go to Northwest Middle School. And I thought it would be a good experience and my mom was on, is on the Union Bridge Town Council for twelve years.
Town Manager O'Connor?
I'm Mackenzie O'Connor and I go to Springdale Preparatory School. I'm in fifth grade and I did this for the experience.
And Treasurer Frazier?
I'm in sixth grade and I go to Springdale Preparatory School. I took this experience because, well, I felt the time I'm allowed to do it and, yeah.
Now you see why it's my favorite meeting. Ms. Jennifer Moran, thank you for your assistance again, the fourth year that you've been helping make this a tremendous success. One of the reasons that we do this is part of the Maryland Municipal League that we belong to. It represents all one hundred and fifty-seven municipalities in the state of Maryland. They have a program called Banner Towns and Cities. And for several years now, we've been a banner town. One of the requirements during November Government Awareness Month is to have and invent something like this. And we started this, this is our fourth year, and I think it's been a tremendous success. The students have bragging rights for a year. And everybody that I've talked to has saved these, even from the very first year, they still have them in their rooms. It's quite an event for them. And hopefully, it's a birthplace for your involvement in your communities wherever you live and that you try to make a difference in your communities. So many people do not want to get involved in their communities. And just this tonight shows me that you care. And I think that your parents have done pretty good, raising you and supporting you over the years. So when you go home, give them a little thank you. To the parents, thank you. Also, the learning facilitators at Springdale Preparatory School, I want to thank them for their support. And the students, you did an outstanding job. And hopefully, this will be something that you remember for the rest of your life. Councilmembers, any comments?
Great job.
All right.
You guys spent three thousand dollars in taxpayers' money, so when taxpayers want to know who did that, we'll be glad to pass along your contact information.
Any comments, Mayor?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? I make that motion. Second.
Everybody's seconding.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All that oppose, say no. Meeting is adjourned.